I'd like to welcome you to the Nelson City Council meeting, October the 3rd, 2022. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and have a word of prayer. By God, we thank you for today, Lord, we just ask that you would be with us tonight, Lord, that you would lead and direct every step forward and every decision that we make. We ask that you would be with our police officers, our EMTs, our servants, Lord, that are out there on the front line, or our soldiers that are here in our cities, Lord. We just, we thank you for the opportunity to serve. We ask that you would just be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us, in Jesus' name, amen.
James, would you please, please?
I pray the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
James, all the favor. Yes, thank you. Next up is public appearance, and I see that we have all three of our candidates here tonight. I'd like to give you guys a couple minutes each, if you want to, to say a word, since we've got folks in here. We want to start with Ms. Alberg. We'll go in alphabetical order. Yeah, and I hate to put you on the spot, but I see you're all here, so it's a good time.
So I'm Ellen Alberg. My husband and I moved here just about four years ago, and we have a school on the corner. And since we've been here just in a short time, we've really been blessed by this community. And one of the things that we've seen is we've seen the community really come together in unity. You guys have made wonderful improvements to the quality of life here, and so Nelson has just really been a blessing to us, a little community that we call home. And we want to be able to bless you back through service, and so I'm open to hear people's ideas and, you know, hearts and things that they want to see happen, so that we can be a support to what's already happening.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mike, I had to think for a minute. Would you like to say a few words? Mr. Allen?
Certainly. I have a history of having worked on the city council two terms. It was one term on the planning commission and then one term as a mayor. And I've got kind of a strong list of accomplishments that I've done while I'm here. The park site that we have now was done with some Cherokee County money. I orchestrated most of that. Then a bunch of projects that are more like management tools. Put together a capital improvement program for the city. I put together fiscal policies at that time that were none. Things of that nature were mostly meant to be management tools to help us manage our efforts. I have, I noticed last city council meeting that I was at, you asked, you didn't ask, but they were trying to give an proposal for veterans administration, and they asked, would all the veterans raise your hand? I was the only one in the whole council room who had served, which is kind of interesting. I expected to see a bunch of names. So to the extent that being a veteran has any merit, I checked that off. And I have a lot of professional working experience, about 30 years worth in the public sector, and know my way around it fairly well. So I have good credentials, and would be interested to try to move forward on some of the projects, like the master plan for parks, and have a list of things we could be doing, so.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Sam, would you like to say a word?
Hi, my name's Christine, or Christie McNeil. I'm just a mom and a grandma and a small business owner. I've owned restaurants. I currently own a landscaping company. And I just, we moved here in 2006, and I absolutely love this community. I love the people in it. I love, I've just gotten involved in the community garden, and just the help and the heart of this community is amazing, especially being so tiny. And I'm just, I'm a citizen that, and we all see the craziness going on around us, and as they say, politics are local. I just want to, I just want to help, so that's why I decided to run.
Thank you, ma'am. Guys, I appreciate you being here tonight and agreeing to do a little pop-up for us. So with that said, does anybody else have anything, public appearance tonight, for anything that's on our agenda? All right, I'm taking that as a no, and we'll move on to item number six, approval of the minutes for September the 8th, 2022. Could I get an approval, a motion to approve this, please?
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes.
William, second please.
I'll second.
All the favor. Janice, thank you. All righty, department reports. Lieutenant Downey, do you have anything tonight?
No, ma'am, which is good news.
That is good news.
Not tonight. I will say that our flock cameras have led to other things outside of the city, so that's a, that's a good thing here recently, so.
Can you elaborate?
How can they name them? They've had several warrants, which they're passing through our county, but they would go undetected without those cameras. So that's a good thing, because a lot of them are wanted for things like theft. I believe in not even like China Station. But like I said, they're passing through. But that's the intended purpose of those cameras. And that's crime that we can't see or you guys see. They still, they don't go undetected.
We appreciate it, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. I'm the mayor's report. To start with, let's go ahead. The November meeting date for the November the 7th, change it from November the 7th to November the 14th due to the election on the 8th. Can I get a motion to move our November meeting from the 7th to the 14th?
I'd like a motion to move the November 7th to the 14th of November.
Can I get a second?
David.
James?
David.
All the favor. Janice, thank you. Our finance report, Miranda is in training in Jekyll right this week, so she's not with us tonight. Does anybody have any questions about our finances? We can take it back to her. Put our stuff in here. You want to go over it?
Okay, I mean, the balances are in there.
Okay.
The general fund balance, $778,446. SPOS 4, $331,956. Pickens SPOS 2, $402,257. SPOS 5, $779,863. Cash reserve, $167,361. SPOS 2020, which is the Pickens SPOS, $566,929. And a grant fund is $252,150.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. First up is our master part plan with Mr. Kidd. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Okay, so I've got a presentation tonight of the draft of the parks master plan for the city. We've been working on this this year. We came several months ago to get input from the community, sort of give an update of the initial inventory and analysis that we've done of the parks themselves. And now this is a draft of the actual concepts for the parks and trails within the city for improvements throughout all those parks, trying to tie all this together. So with that, if we could cut the lights and I'll see how well this, if everybody can see that.
I was going to say, I wonder if it would show better on the wall right behind you? If you just didn't use the screen and just give you a bigger space?
Yeah, on this wall here.
You want to try that?
Certainly try that. Okay, so just a quick overview of kind of where we, what we've done so far, where we are now. As I mentioned, we had done the inventory and analysis initially, so we had a kickoff meeting with the city. We came up and we visited all the parks. We took a bunch of photos, took a bunch of notes, documented these existing conditions in each of the parks and trail. And then we did an analysis of that, looked at things like slopes, the condition of the equipment that's here, vegetation, those sorts of things. In the initial stages, we also did a community survey. Many of you may have participated in that survey. We developed the questionnaire with mayor and council that was distributed. We got, I think about 500 of those were mailed out or distributed, and we received 66 responses, which was, if I remember right, that was about a 13% response rate, which was pretty decent for a project like this. Tabulated those results, we went through those results at the last meeting to show everyone what the results of each of those questions were. I've got a summary of that, that we can look through, the major points tonight. And then we came for the public meeting, like I said, to review the inventory analysis and the community survey. Since then, we've been working on the development of the concept plan itself, and that's what we're here to look at tonight. After tonight, the next step will be developing the final master plan, so we'll take any input that we get tonight. We'll develop that final master plan along with a budget estimate for the specific improvements. We'll develop a phasing plan that prioritizes the projects. Some of that will be priorities that we would put forward simply as, from an objective standpoint. As a park designer, these would be the things that we would recommend, highest priority. That gets combined with the city's priorities, what the community feels are the most important projects to get done. Sometimes we have safety considerations that we need to take into account, so all that goes kind of into the mix for the phasing plan. And then we'll do a final presentation of the final master plan. So the inventory and analysis, and that top chart is hard to read, that was part of the initial presentation that we did. Some quick takeaways from that, that we, of the analysis that we did, so the city has adequate green space currently. If you add up all of the parcels that are being used for parking green space, based on the National Recreation and Parks Association standards, for communities this size around the country, the city of Nelson has adequate green space for the size of your community. Most of the facilities in those parks and green spaces are dated, in need of repair or replacement, with the notable exception being the great playground that you have across from the ball field. In addition to that, some of the takeaways were, there's a need to sort of tie all of these parks bases together to create, help create a sense of identity for the community and for the parks themselves. And we can do that through design. There was also a need for additional trails and passive amenities, and we'll go through that as we go through the concepts. So the public survey, these were the key takeaways from the community survey that we did. We asked the community, what outdoor activities do you participate in? And that was sort of a blanket question, didn't have to do specifically with the parks. It was to get an idea of what people liked to do. Swimming had the highest response. Of course, a community this size would, you know, be unrealistic to assume that you would have an indoor swimming facility or an auditorium, those are hugely expensive. Basketball was the second highest response rate for that question, followed by youth baseball and pickleball. We also asked, in the bottom left, what outdoor activities you enjoy, and these sort of all go together, walking, hiking, biking, and then there was picnicking. So all of the people that responded to the survey included walking, which is consistent with these surveys that we do for communities all across the state. Walking, hiking, those are always the highest rated outdoor activities that people enjoy to do, and picnicking usually follows pretty close along with that. Additional amenities you would like to see in the parks, more trails, that was the highest response rate, 60% of people that responded to the survey want more trails, places to walk, which coincides with that previous question. Picnic facilities was the second highest, which also corresponds to that previous question. And then simply providing benches and places for people to sit. And oftentimes, we will do that along trails, walking paths, to provide little resting points for people to sit, followed closely by shade, and that's another one that we hear a lot in Georgia, in park space, people want shade, whether that's shade trees or shade structures, shade sales, pavilions, gazebos, anything to get a break from the heat in the summer. And then the last, the major questions that we looked at, additional activities that you would like to see. Cornhole, interestingly, was the highest with 33%, followed by pickleball at 27%. Fitness stations, 24%, and then badminton at 18%. So the cornhole and badminton are not something that we would typically see in a survey like this, but that's why we do these surveys. Pickleball being the second highest, along with that first question that we asked, you know, that becomes an important amenity that people, that people are interested in. And then fitness stations go along with walking and hiking and those sorts of things. Some general comments that we received from the survey, most of the residents that responded are either satisfied or neutral on the parks themselves currently. Most of the people that responded said that they would like to rent pavilions if there were decent pavilions available to rent. We asked that question because that's a real popular amenity for cities and counties to provide in their parks, park pavilions that people can rent for parties, birthdays, family gatherings. And most people in most communities will gladly pay a rental fee to reserve that pavilion for a particular party. And in a lot of communities, their pavilions end up being rented every weekend almost the entire year, because you can use those pavilions for the majority of the year in Georgia. So that was something that coincided with what we typically hear. 56% said they would be willing to pay more for additional park programs, facilities, and services. That's always, you know, a good thing to hear when you're talking about development of parks. We also got a number of comments about consolidating resources and focusing the effort and the money spent, the amenities and those sorts of things, on a central location as opposed to kind of spreading it out throughout the city, do, have one good central location that's done really well. So consolidating resources was, that was what that comment was about. Providing activities for all ages, we did, we did get quite a few comments about there not being enough amenities or activities for seniors. So we've tried to address that in the, in the plan. And then just providing more programs in general for things like markets, cookouts, movies, things that people want to do in the parks themselves. And if we provide good park facilities, that usually goes hand in hand. It's very easy then for a city to provide those programs if the infrastructure is in place within the parks. So this was the map that we provided with the survey that basically just shows the existing facilities that you have within the city. Just for reference, real quick, I know it's hard to read, but that's, this is where we are right now, City Hall, this is the marble factory, that's the ball field, and then way up here, that's the half basketball court at the top of the hill, just for quick reference. So those are the existing facilities that we looked at in the concept plan, and we'll use this map as sort of a reference map as we go through these different recommendations. The first one, which is the largest one and most centrally located, being that ball field park. A quick summary from the inventory and analysis, we've mentioned removing the retaining walls, which is something that we had heard from the city as an immediate need for safety concerns. We understand that's already been done. Same thing with the Rebecca Lodge, to remove that, we understand that's already been done. We had also recommended potentially removing that asphalt basketball court that's there now and reusing the slab from the lodge building potentially as a multi-use court surface if that slab was in good condition. The existing basketball court, the asphalt surface is not in great condition, and a large portion of that court falls within the, there's a stream or creek that runs along one side of that basketball court, and a big portion of that court falls within the protective buffer of the stream itself. It's not necessarily that it's currently in violation, but given all the other things we recommended, removing that court and using the slab from the Rebecca Lodge. We also recommended removing the fencing around the ball field, opening that area up as a multipurpose lawn area that could be used for more things than just baseball. That ball field is not built to any regulation standards, and we felt like that was a better use of that space for the entire community. It's the largest gathering space that you have in the city, and it's the easiest thing you could do to convert that space to be usable for more people in the city. So recommendations from the master plan are to add walking trails, fitness equipment, which goes along with what we heard in the survey, adding shade structures at the playground, adding seating areas and picnic pavilions, adding a plaza or temporary stage for some of those events, like movies on the green or different city events in the park, adding some parking, of course, we talked about the basketball, and potentially adding pickleball courts as well, which we'll look at. Another thing that you'll see throughout this draft is we have proposed some naming options for the parks themselves. Right now, the parks don't really have good identifiable names for, for the parks. So we, we've just suggested some options, and this is something that we will need some follow-up input from the city, but we feel like having some good names for each of the parks will help tie those together through the community. So for the ball field area, we looked at potentially something like Center Park, being the center of the city, or City Park, or Edmondson Park, that ball field is currently, there's a sign for Edmondson Field. So those are some suggestions. So we've just used Center Park as an example as we go through the recommendations for that park itself. I know this is a little difficult to read, but you can, you can see it from the graphic. I'm going to grab my laser pointer. So this gets into specific physical recommendations for each of those park areas. So this is School Street here, Kennesaw Avenue. As you come into the park, there's the parking lot with the existing playground, existing restroom facility. So over in this area, we heard from just about everybody we talked to about providing some shade for the seating areas around the playground, which we strongly agree with. The one caveat to that is that the septic field for the restroom is also in this location, and we don't have the specific boundaries of that drain field. And we wouldn't be able to put foundations for poles, for instance, to support the shade sails in that drain field. So that drain field would have to be specifically delineated in order to figure out where we can locate those shade sails. It may be that the seating area needs to move back up into this corner where we could provide some, some shade structures there. As you come into the park, we looked at creating a new entry area, which is this whole entrance space here, starting with the actual paving, which right now, all of this is just asphalt. And we looked at delineating this entry area with some, some sort of decorative paving. And the cheapest, easiest way to do that is simply with stamped asphalt. You can get a stamp pattern that, they can heat up the top layer of the asphalt itself and literally press a stamp pattern, like a cobblestone type pattern, into the asphalt. You can also do overlays on top of the asphalt that can have color integrated with it. There's different ways that you can do that, but we thought that was important here specifically because not only is it the, really the entrance into the main area of the park, but it's also a pedestrian zone for people crossing back and forth in different directions. Because the park is divided by School Street, there's a lot of activity in this area, and we felt like it was important to identify that as a pedestrian zone for the park itself, so that cars will naturally slow down when they, when they drive through there, and sort of dress up the entrance to the park. That coincides with the new entry landscape feature here that we have with the sidewalk connection that ties into trails that go around the park itself. This area would be a new flag plaza that would be the entrance to the park, that might have a, you know, a marble statue or, or boulder with some flags at that plaza. We've got a concept sketch on the next slide that you can see what we're talking about there. That would have some additional ornamental landscaping on either side of it, and really just create that, that nice big entrance point into the park. This would all be additional, actually, that's, I think, that inside row would be additional parking, and then we've got additional angled parking out here on School Street, so we're trying to provide more parking for the park itself. If you do start having more events, you're going to need more parking there. Inside the park, like I mentioned, the ball field would go away, and this would become a big lawn space, which is where you would have events like 4th of July, and movies on the green, and farmers markets, and all those sorts of community events that people were asking for. We've got a walking trail that goes around the perimeter of that space lined with trees to provide shade. We've got a couple pavilions here that would be, potentially serve as those rental pavilions. And then in this corner here, we've got an area as designated as a, as a plaza stage area, if you're doing movies or presentations or something like that, that area could be used for that purpose in the park. And then around the back... And then around the, the back section of that main park area, we recommended just replanting that with, with more trees to provide a buffer from the railroad tracks. Railroad tracks are right here, this park is right along that railroad. So we wanted to get a little bit more of a buffer and backdrop for the park itself. And then that trail would loop down and connect to the existing soft surface trail in woods with a secondary loop here. One of the things that we try to do with our proposed trails is to provide loops like this. So you have a, a main loop, and then you have smaller loops that are interconnected so that people can get out here and walk, and you're not having to walk out and back. You can just keep walking in a continuous loop around that, around that park. Let's see. So I've mentioned the concept sketch, so this would be that entry flag plaza that I was mentioning, with the flags and some sort of sculptural element in that plaza space, and that would greet you right as you come into the park. This gateway sign is something that we, that you've got an entry sign here now, but that sign could be embellished as a, really as a gateway sign, not just for the park, but as an entrance to the, to the city itself. So we've got, got that called out on the plan as well. And then just different design concepts, so we've talked about the stage and the event lawn. This is a picture from a park I did in Roswell, right on the Chattahoochee River. This is just a simple lawn area, they had a, a very small, simple wooden platform stage here that they put up a, a temporary tent when they had events. All they had was this boardwalk, or this wooden stage with a temporary, with a power supply for people to plug in equipment for music or whatever they might be doing out there. So you don't need a whole lot of infrastructure to, to provide that amenity. And then for park pavilions, keeping that very simple, this is probably bigger than what you would need in that park, but very simple structure. These are steel posts with a wooden glue laminated arch beam on the top, which is a really nice feature. These are done as prefabricated kits that are relatively inexpensive. I say relatively because park pavilions are not cheap, but there's a lot of options out there for those pavilions. I just wanted to show that as a, that's from a park in, in Tucker where I... Shade sails, again, there's a lot of different ways to do shade sails. This isn't exactly what you would need at the park, at the playground area, but just to give you an example, this is a project that we did in Winder, where we did a, designed a new stage, and it's got some custom benches underneath in front of the stage, and we did these shade sails to provide that shade for the seating area for the stage. So that's two sail, two triangle sails, the blue and the green was the, that was the color of the, that facility's logo, used both of those colors, so they wanted those for the shade sails. You can also do these as solid rectangles. You can cover a decent amount of space for relatively small amount of money. It's cheaper to do this than it is to do an actual pavilion.
How long did this last?
And how long did it last?
How long did this sales last?
Those sales, that company that we use, they have a 10-year warranty. They do need to be cleaned periodically, which can be done with a pressure washer, but I believe those had a 10-year warranty from that company.
Thank you.
They will, they'll last longer than that, that's just the warranty. So jumping across School Street to the north part of the park, this is where we were talking about the basketball court, obviously Rebecca Lodge used to sit here. This is the creek that I was talking about that runs right along the north edge of that property, and these yellow lines are the state buffers. So the, the outer buffer here is a 50-foot buffer along that creek edge. And that existing basketball court sits right here, so close to half of that basketball court is in the buffer. You can see a small section of the sled from the lodge is also in that buffer, but it's mostly outside of the buffer at that point. So connecting from that, the parcel to the south, we've got a, a new crosswalk proposed here near the railroad tracks. I mentioned the decorative paving in the middle, that would connect to some stairs that would go down, similar to how it goes down now to the basketball court, and then potentially some additional stairs over on this side. We looked at, at putting in a, a new walkway that, that we want, we would like this to be an accessible walkway. This is probably the only potential route that we could even get an accessible walkway into this side of the park, just because there's such a steep grade change along that road. You have to come all the way up to the, to the east side of the park, and then come all the way back down to try and get down that slope. So coming down that trail, we've got a little seating area here, which I'll show in a second. And then, like I mentioned, using the slab from the Rebecca Lodge, potentially as a basketball court, half basketball, or multi-use court. And then we also looked at the possibility of using this flat space here to, to develop some additional courts for pickleball. We're also showing a soft surface trail that would extend up into this north finger of the park, and this is sort of, we weren't really sure what, if anything, the city might want to do with that space. That was the sort of a staging area for the stormwater construction that went through there. When they put those big pipes in and redid that section of Kennesaw Avenue, they used that whole area for construction. So we've got some, you know, a couple different ideas of doing some landscaping with fitness equipment, maybe that becomes a fitness loop. There's different things that you could do with that space, so we'll need a little bit of input, additional input from the city on, on that. And then the, the multi-use court at the Rebecca Lodge, this is showing a half court where you could also do some children's games that could be striked into the, on top of the concrete slab there, and then potentially doing a little specialty paving design at this location. And I'll talk a little bit more about this, this is one of those elements, I mentioned trying to tie all these parks together, and there are, there are little spots in each of the parks where we have an opportunity to do something that's a, that's a little more fun and creative than just a concrete sidewalk. So that's a, that's a one area there that we could look at. And then, of course, pickleball and the fitness equipment, we've talked about that. So now we're gonna go to the Kitty Park that's right across from the Marble Factory. And the analysis there was that the play equipment is obviously really outdated, city's getting quotes, I think, to, to replace that now. The Bradford pears that surround that playground are also in really bad shape. Bradford pears don't last very long, and when they get to the age that they are now, they start to split, and they become a hazard, especially around a playground. And then removing and replacing the fencing that's out there now. So recommendations, installing new play equipment, mulch and benches, new shade trees, sidewalks and paved parking, I'll show you that on the concept sketch, potentially adding a park sign, so that signage is another element that we can use to tie all these parks together, and installing new fencing. Naming options, right now, I think most people refer this as Kitty Park. So some other options might be something, a lot of times people will use geographic locations or street names, so Spring Street Play Park, Marble Town Play Park, this one's by the railroad, it could be Railroad Play Park or Playground. So we've gone with Spring Street in this example. So this is Blue Ridge Avenue here, Marble Factory across the street. Obviously, we've talked about replacing that existing equipment. The size and shape of the playground would stay pretty much as is. These trees would be replacements of the Bradford pear, so we would put in legitimate canopy trees that are gonna provide long-term shade for that playground. We also looked at providing some additional landscaping on the backside as sort of a buffer and screening with a six-foot wooden privacy fence, replacing some of that fencing that's there, and extending that fence all the way out towards Blue Ridge Avenue. And along the front two sides of the park, we have called out to do a four-foot picket fence. That's another design element that we're looking at, potentially to start to tie all these parks together as a, as a visual cue. You could do a four-foot picket fence that provides a sense of enclosure and safety for the park itself, but also provides an aesthetic visual cue that these are, that these are the city's park spaces. In addition to those improvements inside the park, we've got some additional seating. You could also do some fitness equipment here if you wanted to. We've got a sidewalk connection coming into the park with some addition, with going ahead and paving this area here, which is currently used for gravel parking. You can get seven or eight parking spaces in here with an, with an accessible parking space. And with that sidewalk, you can make this an accessible entrance into the playground. And then consolidating the entrance at that corner so that there's only one entrance into the playground. And that typically makes it feel a little safer for parents when you've got kids running around, if there's only one point that they can escape from, it makes it a little easier to keep eyes on them. And then right at that entry point, doing potentially a, a new park sign there as well. And there's different ways that you can do those monument signs. Those can get fairly expensive, but you can do smaller versions of those, we've done that for the parks in Tucker, where we have primary large monument signs, and we have secondary smaller signs, and then tertiary signs on poles inside the park to kind of develop a whole family of signage, and you can do that here as well. So the, the next area is the, the parcel at the corner of Blue Ridge Avenue and Spring Street. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this, this isn't technically really a, a park property, but it's, it's a potential area of interest for the city that might have some, some green space and park opportunities. So I think the, the structure there was removed as well, so that existing house on the corner was removed. There's some existing paving there that's not in great shape, and some items that are being stored on that site now that could also be removed. The recommendations, if City Hall ends up being in that location, trying to coordinate all that with the community garden that's there, future parking, potential event space in that location as well, trying to preserve the large trees that are there, providing additional landscaping and buffers for the adjacent residents. And then the naming options here, Blue Ridge Park and City Hall Park. So we did, like I said, we didn't spend a whole lot of time on these, we just wanted to give a couple quick sort of diagram concepts of what that property might end up looking like. The existing entrance is right here off Blue Ridge, and there's existing asphalt paving there now. There's a little driveway that, that comes up the slope to additional asphalt paving at the top of the hill. This is the structure that was removed down in the, in the bottom corner, and then this is where the community garden is. So we've, we've left the community garden in that location, you could add a, a garden shed out there if you don't already have something like that. Another element that we looked at here potentially, and we'll talk a little bit more about this when we talk about the, the trails, just down Spring Street, and actually, I think it might be on Dogwood Pass when you get down there, right along the edge of the railroad, there's a, an existing memorial with some, some benches, and it's just, it's right next to the railroad tracks, and we looked at potentially relocating that into this park space here. We didn't know what the history of that space was, so we definitely want to be mindful of that, and, and whatever final recommendation we make, we want to make sure it's consistent with, with any particular considerations for that element. So in this concept, the, the two main things, I've, I've got an alternate concept here, the two main things that I wanted to point out, in this concept, we're showing potentially a new City Hall building down in this bottom corner where that existing house is located or was located. There's a lot of benefits to that, there's, there's already some infrastructure there that you could potentially tie into for water and power, possibly sewer. And then at the upper part, we looked at using that space in this concept as an amphitheater type space where you could carve into the, to the hillside for some amphitheater seating and do a stage area, you could redesign that asphalt area at the top as a little park space, and that is a really great view out over the city. So that, that's a really neat spot for the view itself that could lend itself well to, to an amphitheater use in that location. The alternate sort of flips those two and has the City Hall building up at the top, the amphitheater down in this corner. And a potential interesting idea for this, if you do the City Hall building at the top, you might end up designing that structure in a way that it has a, an actual rooftop terrace or patio space that could be used or rented for parties or things like that, again, with an incredible view out over the city. So just a couple quick conceptual ideas for that space. The half basketball Pickens Street Park up at the top of the hill is the next park that we looked at. Talked about removing the existing paved court and fencing that's in really bad shape. It's really, really small and not very comfortable to be, to be used for basketball. There's not a whole lot else there other than the gravel that's used for parking. So recommendations would be provide some paved parking and potentially striping that paved parking for a half basketball court or potentially other uses in that space as well. Providing some fencing and landscaping, sidewalks, seating, and then additional park signage. Naming options, Pickens Street Park is currently the name for that, which works just fine. There's also options, things such as Hillside Park or Sunset Park, and we'll get, we'll get further feedback on that. So this is Pickens Street here, Hillside Street. This is the area that we're talking about, that's the water tower. So this is approximately that parcel boundary, this portion was given back to the county. This is still city property, as I understand it right? So what we looked at doing here was cleaning this up and organizing the parking so that you have a defined parking lot in that space. We understand that, that parking area is used by the church across the street. It could also be used for the, the little pocket park that's sort of catty-cornered to this. And you can get, this scenario shows, eight, eight parking spaces here with one accessible parking space. You've got room, we could push this out, maybe get 10 or 12 parking spaces in here. And then you can see all we did was to add a basketball goal, and you could provide some striping on the, on the asphalt itself for a much bigger area to play than what currently exists. Obviously, you're not gonna play when there's cars, but I don't think there's cars parked here a large percentage of the time, so that could be used dual-purpose for parking and for a play surface. Talked about adding sidewalks and crosswalks, making these connections, we've got a seating area back here. We've got a seating area back here, new landscaping to provide a buffer between the park and the residence immediately adjacent, as well as a six-foot tall privacy fence here, and then some additional landscaping. And we had a slight modification to that where we looked at adding a new park sign if that were desirable for this park with some additional landscaping at the front corner. And then, again, adding that four-foot picket fence along the front side of the park as sort of that visual cue that this is park space. And then adjacent to that is that little pocket park across the street. So we looked at removing the existing, there's a little paved area right in front of the pavilion along Pickens Street. We recommended removing that and sort of recreating the entry for that little pocket park. Adding fencing and landscaping, providing that four-foot picket fence, additional benches and tables and park signage. So a lot of these recommendations, as you can see, are similar from park to park to park, and that helps to tie all those spaces together and make sure we're providing the amenities that the community wants. Naming options, something like High Point Park, or this could also be called Pickens Street. Both of those spaces together could become Pickens Street Park, or this could be Bethesda Trail Park, which is the side street that runs along the backside of it here. So this is Pickens Street. The half-basketball area is over here, so we sort of flipped this. This is the existing pavilion with a couple benches there now. This is that entry space where currently it's, I think there's some concrete paving in the front. It's not really big enough to meet any design standards for parking spaces. And if we redo the parking lot across the street, then you don't really need parking at this pocket park. So we can do a more decorative entry feature here as you come into the park. Looked at some buffer landscaping on the backside with that six-foot privacy fence here. And then the four-foot picket fence would sort of wrap the front two sides of this with entry signage in that corner. And I'll show you what that looks like. We've got some concept sketches of what that would look like. So coming down Pickens Street, this would be the new entrance, the new monument sign for that little pocket park. So additional landscaping, the sign, some ornamental landscaping in front of that. And then immediately in front of the pavilion, looking at some more of that ornamental paving, and I'll show you some examples of what that, what those spaces might be. So talking about some of these common design elements, we've talked about the picket fence idea to start to tie all these together. This was a sign that we designed for the parks in the city of Tucker. I mentioned they had the large monument signs, which is what this is, at each of their parks. So they've got their city logo, the park name, the address, and then some ornamental landscaping in front of that sign. It's a fairly simple design. It's got a wooden sign cabinet, granite base, and then a concrete column with the city logo on it. So that's something that we did as their primary monument sign, and we've got a smaller version of that. So we could do something similar at these parks as well. Some of the specialty paving areas that we talked about, so these are some examples of some things that I've done in different parks. This is a labyrinth that we did. This was just concrete paving with a stencil of a labyrinth that was applied to the surface of the concrete paving. This is in a Veterans Memorial Garden. This is a circular world map mural that's done with concrete. So that's done with colored concrete and recycled glass aggregate. You can see this right here is Canada. This is Greenland. This is Alaska. This is North America, getting over here to Africa and England and Europe. So that was a fun little element that we did in a park. This has a game table right next to it. This was just a more ornamental, kind of whimsical design that we did with some exposed aggregate and some granite pavers. And then this was a sundial that we did in Snowville. This is actually an interactive sundial, which is why this girl is standing on that pedestal with her arms up in the air. This was designed so that if you stand in the right spot and put your arms up, the shadow that you cast would coincide with the time. These are the Roman numerals for the clock itself. So just different examples of things that we can do in those little spaces that are kind of fun and engaging elements that you don't really have now. Trails and sidewalks, go through this kind of quickly. The blue lines are the existing trails that you have. This sidewalk here along School Street is still part of that planned improvement. You just added the sidewalk on Kennesaw Avenue here, existing sidewalks on Blue Ridge. The purple would be new paved sidewalks and trails. And then this little green loop is that soft-surface trail that we talked about in the north section of the Ballfield Park. So currently, you've got almost a mile of, or with this plan, you would have almost a mile of hard-surface trails and sidewalks. The soft-surface trail, you've got just over half a mile. That existing woodland trail is the majority of that, and that's pretty close to a half a mile. And then the proposed sidewalks, let's see, where's my focus here? Proposed sidewalks is just under half a mile. So that last one, that proposed sidewalk loop, and we'll look at this a little closer, that's this loop here that we'll talk about right now. So this loop came up, this was some of the input that we got in the initial stages of the project. So we talked about the sidewalk on Kennesaw Avenue was just added. Sidewalk on Blue Ridge is existing. The sidewalk on School Street is planned, and the purple would be new sidewalks to provide a continuous loop all the way around that block. And that would be about a half a mile, which is a really great loop to have in your city. That also connects to Blue Ridge parcel, connects to current City Hall location, it connects to the south side of the Ballfield Park, and then on down to the soft-surface trails. So all of that becomes connected with that new loop. Couple of things to note with that addition is you do have potentially three railroad crossings, which can be difficult to do, but they just require some planning and coordination with the railroad.
Spring Street, which is closed.
Spring, this road here?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's been closed? So there's no vehicular traffic? The road is still there, the pavement?
The pavement's gone.
Pavement's gone? Okay, all right. So, but we could still route the sidewalk connection through there. And the reason we showed it on both sides here, there are pros and cons to going both ways, and there may be a benefit to having that small loop there as well. One of the things that we would need to look at is that existing foundation that was there from the old depot that might need to be removed as part of that, if that hadn't been removed already. And then potentially adding some additional fitness equipment around that loop as well. So then the existing soft-surface trail that's here now that goes down from the park down to the south, the recommendations there, resurfacing that trail, the city's looking at doing that as a gravel surface trail. You just did that? So we're trying to keep up with the improvements. This is good. Improving the trail connection at Kennesaw. We've looked at that. You've already got signage out there. We probably don't need to do much more than what's already out there. And then really, this just becomes maintenance of the existing structures that are there on an as-needed basis.
We did cut off that back loop of the trail where we had that one bridge that was, because that was just a constant safety issue with repairs and stuff.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. So then, from a design standpoint, one of the things that we looked at potentially is underplanting that forest with some native flowering trees like dogwoods. And that might lend itself to renaming that trail something like Dogwood Trail. This was some safety considerations that we looked at, just some additional signage at the crossing to the neighborhood across the street. You've already got signage out there now. You may not need any additional signage out there. You've got these, I think this sign is out there now. But that is, I mean, it's something that we want to be mindful of because we're encouraging people to cross the street there. That street has very high-speed traffic along that street, and we just don't want there to be an option or opportunity for an accident there. And that is the end of the presentation.
Awesome, thank you. Do you have, can somebody turn the laptop on for us? Do you have a copy of this that you can make sure that the council, we can print off for the council so they can have an opportunity to review this? I know this was a lot.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, oh, I know, I know. It's a lot of material. So I will certainly get that to you. I've got a PDF that I can email to you.
Perfect.
And we can, if you need our copies, we'll get them.
Yeah, we'll get that out to the council where they'll deliver. Now, the town hall, so the folks can have, you know, come in and ask questions and stuff. When do you have that planned for?
We don't currently have a date for that because we wanted to do this meeting first. So we will, we'll follow up with you about that and get that on the calendar.
Yeah, I might be, I might be giving the council time, but just to digest this and take a look at it. And then also, when you do your town hall, they'll get feedback from the community with their thoughts as well. We'll put this out on our website and the concept out on our website. And then when you say we have a town hall date, you could get that, we can add that, you know, prior to what's going on. Council, you have any questions for Mr. Kidd?
No.
No?
They look real good.
Okay. Thanks. I really appreciate your time. Do you have anything else for us?
I don't at this time, so I'll get you the copy of the presentation.
Yep.
And then we'll talk about dates for the town hall.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right.
And if you would like to, if you want to go ahead and get my work finished and that and you want to pack up, you're not going to be anywhere.
All right, I'll stay out.
All right. Okay, guys, next up is our kitty park. We have, let's see, that's going to be fade B. So we have the three, three folks that have bid on that. We've got Southeast that we had in the beginning. We have Paisley Creations, the Recreations, and Bliss Products that we got from Michael Kidd. Each one of these folks provided some pretty good quality playground sets. I'm looking at Bliss first. They were a little hesitant. They gave us three to choose from. Which one are you looking at? I don't want to use my laptop. Which one? Miracle?
This is how it's going to be.
Okay, it's Miracle.
That's Hasley.
Okay, we'll look at Hasley first. Hasley Creations, Recreations. So what I did find, we did talk about, we did, they know that this is just for equipment only. The equipment would be shipped to us, is how this works. These playgrounds are on sale. They ship directly to Nelson, and they would not be here until after the first three years, just like everybody else is on back order. But all three of these, these two here, the first two, have substantial discounts. Take a look at these. The first one here for the equipment price was thirty-five, six, twelve. That did not include the two benches, the eighty-eight picnic table, or the eighty-eight swing.
What they're not considering today, which is the one for thirty-eight, six, twelve, which I can't remember.
Okay, so there it is. I didn't see it so far. Okay, so she did include, or she did include, Allison included. So it was thirty-eight, six, thirty-four, and that included two benches, the eight-foot eighty-eight picnic table, the baby swing, and then the eighty-eight swing. They went ahead and put installation on here, but I, and it was just the way that they had sent it out. Doesn't matter because the installation will come. We'll have to have people bid on that. They'll be separate from this equipment.
Now, why would we ever redo the installation circuit instead of?
You have to have a bid on it. So it all, basically what it is, is if you want to have a say, and you did, and what we put in that park, you had to have quotes for your equipment because you have to order the equipment. Anytime that we do over ten thousand dollars for any type of labor or anything like that, you have to have those three bids.
We want to turn it on, it's changed.
Yeah, so it's unfortunately, it just is what it is, but I don't want to get smacked, so.
I mean, you can't bid the labor and everything together and compare it and choose one. I just don't understand how we would get to install it.
So all these people installed as well. The problem with it is, is you could say, hey, give me a concept. You're not going to get apples to apples. Everybody comes up with a different, you know, they have different concepts. So, and I think it was kind of, I guess, wanted to kind of choose what you had. So what I did is I went back to each one of these vendors and I said, hey, I need for you to give me something comparable to what you guys liked that Southeast did. And that's what they did. So they gave us a, let's see if I can find it. So this one here for Paisley Creations, if you look at it, it's similar to what Southeast did for us in height, width, so they had the dimensions. So, and for this playground, with the extra benches, the table, and those swings that we want for the eighty-eight compliant, their price was the thirty-eight.
Is this the company that manufactures these things?
Yeah, this one did. The other ones out of Missouri, I want to make sure. No, this one, the manufacturing company's out of Missouri. The one for Bliss Products and Southeast Products manufacture out of the same plant, and that's now we know. So Paisley Creation, again, if you look at their numbers, it's comparable to what we already have in Southeast, and it would, their price was the thirty-eight, thirty-eight, six, thirty-four. The next one is going to be Southeast Solutions. This is an updated one, but their stuff is not on sale.
Until their time?
Yeah, it's not on sale right now. And it's sixty-seven, four, seventy-seven for the playground, that's just for the structure. She did go ahead and put the playground timber and things like that in here, but she did know, she's got the eighty-eight table, it was separate, that's thirteen hundred. The benches are twelve, forty-five. The Ultra Site.
It's all in, you know, for the ones that are there.
So that's comparable. And then the Ultra Site swing for the adult was thirteen, thirteen, nineteen.
She had the explanation here.
She did. I saw that. I had told her today. She just revamped mostly, I think, just for the council's sake, this recreation. She just revamped mostly, I think, just for the council's sake, was the recreation, the playground structure. Pressure for the structure. Seventy-two, five. Roughly eighty thousand for that, and that's not including shipping. That's just the. She did go ahead and show the installation that they have, just for noteworthy, it was seventeen thousand, four hundred. Again.
That was seven.
Yeah, for the total price there, it was seven. But that really doesn't matter, because they'll have to bid the installations separately. The next.
So looking at these bids, the only thing we would be looking at is the equipment itself.
Yeah.
And the other stuff, board, mulch, fence, everything else has to be bid separately.
So Bliss is, Bliss Products is the third, that's the third one. And theirs is, they did the installation on here too. So the Casnet Playground Set, which is the very first one, is sixty-five, two oh two, with a twenty-six thousand dollar discount. So I think if you look on the set itself, it is twenty-three, nine, ninety-seven. And they got aggressive. They went ahead and put three in here for you to look at. All of them are ages five to twelve. The space required is right in line with what we need. Capacity's thirty-five to forty-five. The critical fall height's seven foot, six inches. And then in the back of it is just some of the featured components that come with it. If you look at, there's called a top view in here somewhere, that top view shows you what it looks like from the ground, looking down on it, and you can see everything that's on there. It's on there.
It's small upstairs.
Okay. The second one that they, that they put out was the Viking's Helm.
Five thousand, seven, four.
And it is thirty-three, six, seventy-one. Again, ages five to twelve. The space requirements were the same. Capacity forty-five to fifty-five. The critical fall height's four, four foot, eight inches. And then there's their supermax space walk and the supermax cliff climber. Those are things that it comes with, and then the cliffhanger. Then they gave some extra things, just in case you wanted to add, which was outdoor fitness. So you can always add to these products. The next one is the Casnet, and it was, the first one, the first one. The Casnet's the last one, and it's thirty-two, five, ninety-five.
No, it's Starshine.
Starshine is the first one. That's the one I liked.
Thirty-nine, seventy-seven.
Casnet's the one I liked. After we can add all the things, all the options that they have, and it was, and it is, it's thirty-two, five, ninety-five. Critical fall height, that's seven, seven foot. Capacity sixty-five to seventy-five, we won't meet, but it's nice. And then the space, five to twelve age group. And again, on the back of it, Duramax Waveboard Climber, it just shows you some of the components that's there. It gives you a top view for this one here. Has a shade on the top of it. And then there's just some extra things that if you liked it, you know, you can always add to this playground set, which is within any of them. From what I understand, all three of these folks do installation, and would bid on equipment that, whichever equipment that we purchase, they'll bid on the installation of it. Bliss Products, it won't ship until the first of the year. They do deinstalls. Pricing is good through October the thirty-first. They all come with a warranty. It's just looking and seeing what you like the best and making that decision.
So equipment and swing first, and then site afterwards?
Yeah, the installation bid will go out. We'll have to put something together this week, hopefully have it out for you guys to review by November.
These material surcharges, are they along with the?
That's what we were talking about, and that's what I don't know. I need to, I need to ask about the material surcharge. I'm not sure what that one is on there. I've got, I've got a question mark on it, and that's for Bliss Products. And I don't, I don't know if that is what they're saying, material surcharges for their installation. I know it was on another one, so.
And that's the one I was looking for.
Yeah. I have a feeling it is, but, but it doesn't say installation, so. All of the, the three structures that Bliss put out all have a forty percent, they're all forty percent off through October the thirty-first, and the price that you see there was what was reflected. So. Casnet from them, which was the one I really liked from that group, was, it was originally sixty-five, two oh two, and their price with a forty percent discount's thirty-two, five,
What about the swings from the other two companies?
They're roughly the same. So Southeast was five thousand, but it didn't include, it didn't include any of the swings. That was just the structure. It was like five thousand, one hundred. And then for, let me see what it was for this one.
About nineteen hundred?
Yeah. One of them was.
Did it show a picture of it?
Yeah, they do, in there somewhere. It's just a three-bay swing, so you have a total of six swings. Yeah, this one. So for Bliss, it's over here, this is where it looks like, and it's just three sections, but it's the.
Oh, yeah, eight-frame style.
It'll later be eight-frame, or it'll be the horseshoe style, but they'll, they won't Wayne, what are your thoughts?
I guess you know what, rely on the investment. I test the swing, this is the structure. Southeast isn't really up there compared to the other two, isn't it? It's kind of hard to compare it, I don't know. Look with this Southeast, Eastern. That Casnet that he was talking about looks pretty comparable to what they priced, but the swing, the eight-frame swing is going to be a whole lot cheaper than what they priced.
Okay, that's all. So that's Bliss Products. The reason that they look comparable is because they're manufactured in the same warehouse, it's the same stuff, just a different, just a different name on it, is what it is.
Yeah, that looks similar to it.
First one was on, on three. And then this one here, this is an arch swing too, so there's, that's the last one. It's the arch. This is three-by-three arch swing, three-by-three total belt seats, and this is the, this is the same.
The last thing was, that's what you're talking about, I think?
Mm-hmm.
That's the first.
That's Miracle. This is Bliss, let me see. I'm reading the description for both of them. And this one here is Bliss Products, that had that one on there, and Southeast Solutions as well, so.
Yeah, Bliss has an install on the top, and then that material surcharge is on the bottom.
Yeah, this, this five-three for Bliss Products included the, it included all of your, your seats, the three bay total with six belt seats. This one here, and it's not going to be that, it's actually going to be, we want an ADA swing for people that have disabled children, and then a baby swing on one end.
Yeah.
So this one here was, it's five thousand, eighty-seven, but the galvanized seats are separate, so it's actually, you've got a bucket seat, which is the adult swing we were talking about, and then the belt seat, so you, that's another seven hundred, probably fifty dollars for.
Sixty-six hundred or something like that.
Yeah. Which is about right, because that inclusive swing, I think, is the one it is, or maybe just two to five. Need to get clarification on that, but that's, that's about the same. You have anything, David?
No.
James? Anything?
They all have signed warranties for the materials.
They're pretty much in a structure, steel. They don't put the, they don't put that plastic wrap on them anymore, you know, the, it's not like that anymore.
So with Bliss, that's the prices for the Casnet.
It is, but you've got three to choose from, as far as the playground sets go. I mean, I like, I like the one that they gave us. I just like the features on it. Thought it was, had a little bit, you know, stuff that looked a little bit fatter than the others.
What was the difference with the other swings? Or this just has?
Swings are going to be about the same. Those, those three-by-three swings are going to run you about, it's going to be about fifty-five to fifty-seven hundred. Because, and the reason that it'll go up from the five, five thousand, one or two hundred dollars is because of that.
It goes up.
Well, it's that one swing for the disabled children, the ADA swing. I thought the one, the one for the price, the Paisley Creation, they, they have a really good, I mean, it's comparable, I think more comparable to Southeast than, than the other one that you guys like so well. I like the arch swing sets that they have. This one here has multiple slides on it, like a bunch of slides. It has a little rock, the rock climbing wall, it had, I think this one has like three, three different slides on it, if you look at it. And I like the fact that if you wanted, if you've got a little space left over, and you want to add something, you could. I think there's a basketball goal on some of these, you can just add, if little kids want to bring their own ball down and do that, you know? Yeah, there's, there's a double slide, which are one, two, three, three different styles on this one. And again, that price is again thirty, thirty-five, so.
Does it?
Thirty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-eight. I keep making like twenty more for that one.
The question between, well, the house they supplied, and the Bliss, goes back to that material surcharge. Price-wise, they're pretty equivalent, but you're going to owe ten thousand dollars for some unknown fee, and they're out.
No, I don't, I don't think that's what it is at all. I honestly believe that that, again, is their, that's their installation fee.
Well, installation's got a.
That's not the installation fee, because that's a different one.
Yeah, that's the very first line item that the bid says, installation fee.
Why is it?
That's what's still a deal. So what's the material surcharge?
Let's see.
They're charging twenty, they, their bid has twenty thousand just for the installation, and the material surcharge of ten thousand five. So without knowing where that kicks in.
So this one has a freight.
It's also a lot more.
For which one?
The last one. The freight on the, the old Z1 is nineteen hundred.
Last thirty, almost thirty-seven for the cost.
Bliss one's thirty-six, ninety-eight. Plus the ten thousand dollar freight fee.
Then for the calls, we need to add a little of that for the inclusive swing.
See, it should, fifteen miles from here. Freight's thirty-six hundred on that.
Yeah, I suppose that the person's eighteen, that's almost double. I'm sure it's just a little part of it.
I don't know if I have a chance of that. Just being here, this is.
I think that's due to the installation, it would be a top. I think that has to do with the possibility that materials could go up, go out. They're just going to have to add it in case. I'll do my math. I guess that's going in the estimate, it's not like a possibility, it's... I don't know, but that's a little scary.
I like the swing and Southeast's got there, I think I like the playground.
The playground in Southeast is better, the whole side, we don't have to play wood lines.
It looks like it's a little higher quality.
What's your thoughts, Will? Let's see, the freight on this one, see, I'm right, it's nineteen. The thirty-five, that's... Talita's eighty-five, that's the one from off your truck.
Shipping and handling, that's big, clearly.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think, I know. You think that's for everything, or you think it's just all swing?
Yeah, it's like shipping and installation. That's about what we pay in public, we think, and stuff, it's not like that much, but... You know, you're just dropping the prices. Again, we just don't know if you can be dropping it up there. The ten thousand dollar fee is sketchy.
So the equipment and swing, just equipment and swing for Southeast is seventy-four and change?
Basically, you just take off the installation fee of like seventeen thousand from the line of, so, and unless they added mow for something, which they did. Take off the landscape tender, which is twenty-seven hundred.
Yeah, it's just the first page is equipment and swing, it looks like.
Well, then, yeah, the table. There's that page too.
I just wrote the calculator down on the first page there.
Yeah. There's an ADA table, two of them on the second page, and the, the, the adult swings, these are on the second page.
Well, that would be the difference there too, then, are we getting the other equipment too, or just the...
Yeah, you're talking about for the swings.
The other bids just have the playground itself in the swing.
Um, one of them has, one of them has, another one has the benches, but they're gonna, those benches are comparable, 'cause that's the same thing we just ordered up there, so you're looking at...
Price-wise.
Price-wise, it's about the same as we ordered it ourselves.
Same on the shipping.
Yeah, so if you just look at the, if you just look at the, um, at the playground equipment and the, the swing, um, stuff, you're looking at seventy-two... Seventy-three...
Seventy-four, two seventy-four, it's a change. So that's just for the equipment and the swing, Halsey is...
We've got another, like, forty thousand hundred, or four thousand on the next page.
Thirty-nine for the equipment and swing. If that's all we're looking at, is the equipment and swing here, and I'm not adding the freight or anything, but just, that's the equipment price of thirty-eight six. But we'd have to add a little of that for the inclusive swing, you're saying?
I think that's what thirteen hundred. That's what it seems to be for that, um...
That puts you at forty then, as compared to seventy-four there.
So, you know what, if you look at it, if you look at Bliss, their installation in all is ninety-one five. Southeast's for their, for the, for equipment and everything is one oh seven, so, it's not much, and then what was it? Where's the other one?
They're all just making an exception to the policy and just...
Order to whichever one you want.
You're gonna sit, you're gonna spend so much money on that equipment.
I think you can do that, I think you can combine them, I think you've asked for it on everything.
We have three quotes, I mean, we've got three quotes.
We spent hundreds of dollars on advertising, and we need to change that policy anyway, just for the record, 'cause there's times like this, and we waste so much money. And we could've gotten the stuff from Southeast, and all that, really cracked this. I do think that the South, that this set from Southeast actually looks a lot better. Sorry, these estimates came in today, it was four o'clock.
They offer here, they're the only talking about.
Yeah, and our next meeting is November fourteenth, so we can either pay to have another council meeting, which is gonna waste more money, or...
Part of the Nature Trail color scheme. Color scheme.
I was, I was still looking at the prices of equipment, I didn't went to color scheme.
Except when it's, the ones that's likely to fade, that's where we have everything else issues. I think whatever one.
You're looking at fifteen thousand dollars, and they're local. Yeah, that's what I was saying, if we look at the totals, we're looking at fifteen thousand dollars difference, and Southeast is local, so it's...
I'd rather spend a little bit more and get something that's better quality than fighting over a few dollars or something that you're gonna have to replace in the end of the year.
So you're saying that, that was, using this cost funds, as long as, 'cause we've got, we have three quotes, they all include installation, I can go, we can go bid on, bid on it and just have it. Southeast said, with that said, um, when I talked to Carrie yesterday, she said that it would be probably April before they could get in here and do it, because it's gonna be well after January before it can ship.
Well, we'd still have to get the site credit before anyway, so...
Yeah.
Give us a little time to get that figured out.
And, and if, and if, if the playground equipment discounts in the, in between, she said she would give us the discounted price, so...
Well, the Halsey doesn't have, or the other two doesn't have anything, at least with the... Southeast, it's included the balls, the border, everything.
Why does it, when you look at the quality of the equipment, like, the first one versus that?
So Bliss has the playground border, but it's, it's also at the ninety, ninety-one five, they included everything, um...
They're padding everything, you know, with these, right?
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars.
Well, you've got a ten thousand dollar thing, but the, as far as the border, the arch, when you said, everything, even with what they're saying is a forty percent discount, there, there only fifteen thousand dollars difference between our local provider and, and this one here, so... How long did that call did you guys, you tell me what you want to say?
If all Southeast does, know they both have more.
Yeah, they do, they both have, yeah. So Nathan, I'll start with you, which one did you like? And are you good with doing the whole thing?
Yeah, but that makes more sense to me.
Which, which one did you...
The Southeast. I like the Nature Trail color scheme.
When? Anytime.
If we're, if we're taking everything into account that's in the bids, looks to me like I get much more with Southeast. And I'm following that Nature Trail too, looking at it, that's my...
Okay. James? Your turn, James.
You're going back there?
Yes.
Same thing.
Okay. David, you're good too, okay, well, there we go, can I get a motion to approve the Southeast bid for...
Can I, just, we make a motion, a motion, make it work and make it such a new policy, so I can not take it in.
That's even exceptional, that exists.
I mean, well, if it's not needed, it's not needed, I mean, I'm good, we have three, we have three bids.
I know, but I know, we're in some concerns about it too, so I'm just covering.
I'll get your bid.
I think if all three of them hadn't put the, um, hadn't put the removal, I mean, the, the, um, hadn't put the, hadn't bid for the installation of it, so, the only thing we will have to do is the removal of what's there, 'cause that's not in here.
He's gonna add that to the bid whenever he sends it in, but he said most people do church, churches, one first. I'm gonna separate the bids when he sends it in.
I'll need price or fence again back and all.
Yeah, he's gonna give a price to recreate the area or move fencing and everything, he's also gonna add a line in to remove the equipment that's currently there, because most, most cities ask churches in other areas if they want it, or they just pitch it. Well, there's, there's parts of it that are okay, but there's other parts of it, um, some of the benches that have like exposed wire. The parts of the equipment, it, they're just faded, like, and they painted over, and we're just, aesthetically, it's not pretty. But if a church was using it, it would be fine, structurally, they're not gonna get hurt on it.
They don't stay up, 'cause they have to rust.
Yeah, and it's stuff that they may need to have replaced, or just use parts of it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the, um, the Southeast's solution, um, play equipment and installation? Four hundred and seven, four thirty, thirty.
Well, I will make a motion to that.
Will you? Nathan, on favor? Thank you guys. Next up is the city owned two, uh, two owned properties, the, the city owned properties, two lots. Chelsea?
I've had a couple of calls from, um, a couple of different people wanting to, the city's going to give out the two parcels currently, and one is the half acre lot that we've got roughly twenty thousand wrapped up in, plus however much the city had in the other quarter acre, when we acquired it, there were two thousands. And one of them is the guy that bought that commercial lot over there. Um, we've also had a couple of call about the other lot the city owns between the property Marsha Heaton and Fitz's house. One of them is the guy that bought Marsha Heaton's house and wanted to potentially purchase it to, like, just combine it into that lot. Um, but, I mean, obviously, we have, we can't just sell it to one person, we have to put out for anyone and everyone to do something with it. I don't know offhand, I know it's considered a lot of record, there was a house on it at one point in time. But, I know Marsha Heaton originally said something about it, she sold the house to, it's Jonathan School where they own, I think it's Global Restorations, is the one that, that, that bought it. So it's Jonathan Road, maybe, and Jon, Jonathan School, where, it's not Jonathan Road, I can't remember the guy's first name. But they're gonna, um, do rehab work or whatever, but they were interested in possibly purchasing it, but we can't, again, we can't sell it to one person, it has to be made available to anybody and everybody. But they're the ones that have specifically approached us more than once, asking what we're gonna do with it. And we're just sitting...
You talking about on Pickin' Street?
Yeah, the Fitz's house, Marsha, Marsha Heaton's, that other house. There was a house there that was, uh, I guess it was a drug house, the city purchased it, or acquired it.
It can't be a quarter of an acre, can it? Not if, I mean, it's unbuiltable.
Yeah, it depends on what environmental health says, it's a lot of record, it existed here in nineteen eighty-four.
I wish we could combine it to what it's sitting next to.
Well, that's what the guy, the ones that...
You can compare it out for bid. See who's interested, the one next to it's probably gonna be the...
Yeah, the ones that approached us about it are the ones that own the properties next to it. But we can't say, oh, well, you're the only ones that can buy it, just because it's, it's in the end.
How can, how can you get around it in that situation to keep somebody from...
You can't.
Trying to build a house on, on a piece of land that's big enough?
Well, if it, it, it would be the environmental thing that would prevent it. Otherwise, if there was a house on it before, it wouldn't be a lot of record, but modern, modern environmental requirements would probably have the effect of whether it's now built or not.
Could we listed it at auction like an unbuiltable lot?
What you would normally do is just advertise for bids, let any interested persons know, and see what bid you get, and if it's something you want to sell for.
Yeah, a builtable lot, the environmental health dictates the size of the house, so if they do that and it's a one bedroomed house, I mean, people are gonna invest in putting a one bedroomed house on it.
I don't think you're gonna see a lot of people coming up by a quarter acre lot, just to build on it.
A house that's been tore down for a certain period of time, you're not supposed to build back on it anyway, a quarter acre, so much stuff I read in the...
Well, it's, it's the size of the lot that still is allowed to have a, a use, otherwise, it's not gonna be taken their property.
Because otherwise, saying that someone's property...
If it was always tiny, it always gets to be tiny.
When y'all demoed it, did you tear the subject out?
Yeah.
Somebody's had like fifty cut, you know, grounds.
Bought it, makes everything, make them, you know, to say, you know, like, I'd use a wall to be there.
Yeah, well, that's why anytime somebody asks... Well, that's why anytime somebody asks, I tell them they have to go to environmental health, and let me know what they say, and then we'll consider going from there. So it's not, it's not the city's decision, although, you know, everything is placed back on environmental health.
I know a lot of places are doing, um, that they're basically putting it as part of their ordinances and stuff, that you have, your lots have to be a certain size before you can build on them.
Well, they do, but that would be a current lot, like, if you take new property and dividing it into smaller lots, you get, these are granted by the name, it's a lot of record.
Correct.
So basically, something like that would stop.
Well, it could be, it could be even, I mean, it might not meet with some of our other requirements, they might make it handle setbacks.
A house is all, all unless it's an acre, but they didn't have...
Yeah, well, that's what we run into a few times, and, I mean, the, the environmental help will work with them to an extent, but it's, it's allowed, we send it to them, 'cause there, there's times that they'll tell them, you know, 'cause they have to per test and everything, and there's some that you're not gonna pass it anyway, so, it all falls back on, we have no control over environmental, so...
So the lot by Marsha Heaton's the quarter acre?
Well, you don't know, I don't know offhand, I'm guessing it's right at the quarter acre.
Well, how did they offer it, so, so back in the day, they offered that lot to, um... Did they, I thought that we, okay.
And there's been some, some of that said about the one, about the water tower, and there's been a lot of that other.
Okay.
It's hard for somebody building on the other to keep it for green space, and I haven't seen a house stand out.
Well, the, the times that I've been approached about it have not been for an individual to purchase it, to put a house on it. The times I've been approached about it have been from the homeowners that want to acquire it to add it to that other parcel.
We'd have to put a separation in it, or...
I mean, let me, let me take a look, I've not looked at that particular property to see how it would comply with all of our requirements, I can take a look at it and see. We may be able to just answer it.
If somebody buys it, they're gonna expect to put a house on it. Or you wouldn't buy it, if you bought it.
You're talking about Marsha Heaton, the house across from her?
She had her mom's house, she sold it.
She sold it, and then there's a lot next to it.
Yeah, it's between her house and the Fitz's house.
Yeah, there's a lot, right there.
I mean, it would've worked better if both, if they were, if they could buy.
Now, if there's like a split or a land, it's not like a lot of record, I mean, the city can work with somebody, but it's...
In this way, we, we don't...
The city acquired it due to project activity, and the city put a house on it.
Well, there's nothing that keeps us from putting conditions on it if we want to sell it. We own it, so this is different from the concept of, you got some private property on there, already has it. We could sell it with the express condition that you can't build an independent house on it.
It has to be combined with that lot, or whatever.
I think, I mean, we can put conditions on a sale of property, let me confirm that, but I think that's a possibility.
Maybe like limiting the... Which is ours, wait...
I know, but what I'm gonna say is if you restrict it to where it has to be combined to one of the other lots, and you're restricted, you're restricting it to the sale to only these two people can buy it.
Well, instead, we wouldn't do that, we would say, put a condition that you can't go house on it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm looking.
Anybody that buys it just gets to buy it for...
Than one of two people.
Recreation of use. Yeah, and that's, that's a possibility. Yeah, and that's, that's a possibility.
And no tents.
Let me confirm. That we can put a condition on it that no.
No tents, no RVs. No tents, no RVs, no standalone.
I'll report back.
Okay.
Next month.
And then the other lot is?
The other ones, the half acre lot we have down here in Blue Ridge, that had the house on it that we tore it on, that we've got. We had about twenty thousand and the city had other money in it prior to that, but it was two quarter acre lots, the city combined into a half acre lot. Environmental health did say that that is a builtable lot.
With restrictions?
Yeah, it would be a small house. So, I talked to them when we had the lots combined.
Is there a place I wouldn't run out of that one?
Yeah. So, it's, the, the guy that bought the commercial property down there has contacted us. And, but then there's all, you know, I don't, but you never know. I mean, it's one of those, but that is considered a builtable lot and is currently zoned as residential. It's not commercial property.
If you try to do anything to add a business in, you have to come back to us.
Yeah.
Conversation I had with him, I think you had the same one. You wanted to, you just wanted to build a house anyway. So, any issues with selling, with putting those lots? And how would we do that? Would bid it? You would?
Ask to bid or auctions and general recommend using a.
Depends, I mean, depends on what you think the market is for these. If you think it's, I mean, like the really little one, you probably just better have a paper. If it's something else that you need to, did you really wanna advertise out there that you think general public would be interested in? I mean, you could involve a real estate agent. It just has to be a bid situation. You have to basically give a deadline for bids and just get all the offers that want it, and then decide which one to accept. But if you wanted to get, you know, like a listing, so that the world knows about it, you could do that.
We gotta find out what the restriction is, which I'm fine with keeping it for our city maintenance bearing, because we're, we have no, we're parking trucks or anything anymore.
I do, I mean, I don't have.
We need to get that light industrial.
Yeah, I, I quite wanna put.
It's up against commercial right now. If we're just building, building up our store, our stuff in.
But even our light, our, even our zoning states that you can't do storage.
You're not required to comply with zoning.
I know that, but if you expect other people.
I mean.
It's kinda like when you're elected, you set the standard.
You're not legally required to comply with zoning.
It's kinda like sticking, I mean, this building up on top of that thing over there, it puts up to residential. So, that's all I'm saying.
I don't want to.
Not the exception to the rule or the standard.
Hopefully, we wouldn't have to, won't have to put it.
Putting houses on the, these will be your laws.
But that's, the rules change in laws they grant by events. If that's the case, and the city needs to buy all the lots that they don't want people to build on, and you say that, that's like. But we don't have the money to do that.
I'm just saying, we're parking a truck out here in a parking lot right now. We can build us another, if we buy more equipment, we can like tap somewhere to house it.
Where is, where's the garbage truck right now?
It's upstairs.
Is that right?
It's up at.
Oh, you mean.
The new one's on it. It, it was like three weeks out, two weeks ago, and they'll put the tipper and stuff on it. The light, I had a call from the guy that owns all the light industrial stuff a few months ago. I think they're tiptoeing around the idea possibly, possibly starting to sell some of that. I don't know, so let's wait and see. The one guy owns all of our light industrial stuff, so that's kind of the issue. But ideally, that would be the best place for the city to put something.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, I mean, it wouldn't be right there in the.
But it would also be fighting by our own zoning departments.
I thought we was leasing something from him there.
We are. We just need to get, right now, it's getting somebody else. I need to get Chase when, as soon as he slows down a minute, to give us a price, just to put a, you know, a ten over. Not something where you're spending twenty-five thousand dollars. We just need a ten over for it right now. We'll be part of the sanitation trucks.
We paying real right now?
We are.
We're not parking it there?
Not yet. The reason being is Evan was working, he was working on the road. It's been really wet, so hopefully, hopefully, this coming month, we can put the trucks there, so that's what I'm wanting to do.
Is there a road to get to the?
Yes. Yeah, and he's, he, he gave us an easement and gravled it, and it, that's on me. I haven't had five minutes.
I mean, I think just a gravel parking area would be better than nothing, right?
Yeah, we can't, I mean, and, and we are. Yeah, and we can do that.
Especially since we're paying a thousand a month, huh?
Yeah. And it will be, it will be stinking up people's yard, so I'll make a note to it. I've got a note to call Evan, so I'll call him tomorrow. I just, I've had too much stuff going on. We had Marvel Festival this weekend, so.
This is like the third or fourth month we ran into, right?
Um, it's the third.
June, July, August, September, but.
But if you want to, you can go look at it tomorrow with him. I, I don't wanna go by myself.
It's gonna be gravelled.
I think Evan's done some stuff down there. He's come in twice and talked to me about it, yeah.
It's, it's gonna be gravelled. I rubbed through it yesterday.
Did you?
Okay.
I was, I was under the impression nobody was gonna start paying in after it was ready, but.
No, as soon as we sell the lease payment, no.
It needs to be, some weeds, weeds are head high out there right now. They're waist high, really. It needs to be sprayed or something.
It's gravelled, so we, we're gravelled. I will try, maybe this weekend, if anybody's available, we can go look at it. I'm busy, I'm busy through, through Friday. So, last week it was the same, so, and didn't get over there this weekend, because I was busy here. So, we wanna hold on the one property by Marsha Heaton's house for you to do for clarification.
Yeah, we'll come out.
And then the half acre lot on Blue Ridge that's combined, are you doing anything on that? Are you looking at anything that we need?
It doesn't sound like I need to look at.
I understand it now working on it. People keep asking me and.
You also decide whether you wanna sell it, right?
I'm sorry, I don't know. So, I don't really know.
Probably just pause on it for now, I guess, right? What are y'all doing?
I ain't know what you said, what you said.
All right. Next up is maintenance equipment. Kelsey, you wanna talk about maintenance equipment?
We got estimated trade-in values for our two tractors actually came in much higher than we anticipated. The backhoe, they are offering thirty-nine thousand five hundred. For the older tractor, six thousand two hundred and fifty, which is, right, forty-five thousand. The next auction will be the second weekend in May, which is a good bit off. The pricing from Nelson Tractor for the other machine is still valid. Went by there today to verify that. And a two Mason tractor, we got pricing today as well. The, the pricing was actually very simple. It went in a thousand dollars. They priced it four different ways, the same as Nelson Tractor did, two or a thousand less, I think, two or a thousand more. They were a little hesitant to price it, just, I think, because they're, they're districted based on areas, whatever, so when they asked if we were Pickens, and when we're half Pickens, have charities, so they. Really wanna give us a price, but it did, just because we are part of the church. And we also had a guy come by that worked for Reinhardt Equipment, just happened to stop in last Friday. So, he sent us an estimate for comparable piece of equipment if we got a Bobcat piece. He said that they're, I think he's with the Reinhardt Equipment Places out in Grove. That one, even though they sell Kubota, doesn't do construction type equipment or something, so they can't sell a Kubota Mini-X to us. But a comparable Bobcat piece would be roughly seventy-three thousand.
So, seventy-three thousand.
That's for Bobcats.
Was it the next one, Nelson Tractor? No, it's gone.
That's Bobcat, that's for Bobcat, that's not for others. That's a, if you went with a Bobcat machine instead of a Kubota. I would still stick with Nelson Tractor, just because we do so much business with them, and they service everything, very easy to work with, very easy to get pricing. We have a pretty good reputation with them. There is a price difference between the one with the cab, without cab, but the enclosed cab is a safety feature. So, the pricing was between sixty-six thousand. But that was with the one that had the, I guess, an excavator mower. I'm not familiar with this stuff. We do not have the maintenance guys here tonight to explain it. The other one was sixty thousand two hundred. They did not have the excavator attachment thing on it. The other two were the same thing, but without the enclosed cab. So, the enclosed cab is.
That ain't both cab, that's a.
Where's the, that's Mason's.
That's a plus, yeah. You got the hat.
But how much, how much experience has our maintenance man got with an Estimator?
I think Ben has used them a fair amount, and Ricky is kind of excited about learning to do, to use them, so.
How about a trailer? If we find out.
They, the guy from Renter was actually supposed to send us an estimate, and I've not gotten estimate out on that.
Do you cop country board trailers out here?
I have not.
We need to find that.
Is that a Dalton County? It's still Dalton County. So, we're next to four hundred.
Three and two. So, it's Copland, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Very good truck.
So, give, I guess, we should get with Ben and find out what size to next on it. What, the next time, the trailer, the next time, with what size we need. Yeah, if we do a trade-in, we're looking at roughly twenty thousand dollars difference, if we trade both of those other machines in. Which I was honest, whenever I originally called and asked for a rough estimate on the trade-in, he'd said around twenty. So, we're only off at thirty-nine. It's a little bit surprised. Because we purchased it new for fifty-three.
How long were those offers?
They don't change.
Yeah.
How long were those offers good for?
Yeah.
The trade-in, I do not know. This, the estimate they originally gave us for the machines said August thirty-first. That's why I went by today to make sure it was still valid, and he said it was. I talked to Logan, who's the guy that gave, maintenance guys the original estimates for the new one. And the estimates for a Mason did include tax on it, so those, the tax would not be on there. There's some internet, the tax exempt bid.
How long did they tell you to take to get one?
I, I did not ask him. I know the, the guys asked her that. I do not know.
They was back, I don't know if they showed it to me.
The thing is, is we're not using either one of those machines though, right?
No, they'll take it back. We have the youngsters in town to smash it down, because it's, it's used for.
So, it's not like we're out of phase of.
No, we only want it in twenty fourteen. I think I had a six hundred and hour on it.
You enjoy it, but you can do it up to come out and then leave it at full discretion.
Yeah, that's five hundred dollars on it.
As to which one to purchase.
Yeah.
If you're worried about all this excitement.
Yes, we are.
Sorry, Logan.
So, we would need a, we would need a vote for twenty thousand dollars a difference, or would we want to just take twenty-five and?
Instead of you do the trade-in or you wait till the auction? I think with the auction, you're kinda taking a chance, because they're, these machines are in high demand right now, but.
Actually, that's a better price, and I thought they'd give you.
That's way better price than I thought they, they would be giving us, so.
I feel like in the long run, we'd regret not having at least one tractor to do, adding in stuff, but.
I think the excavator kinda takes the place of that.
You can't drive around like you can a tractor. It's only fine if you're. If you wanna go one side of the city, you would really need to haul it instead of burning the tracks like I've grown.
The last bike, right, that's all I'm going to do.
We really use the, that is the excavator does a lot more. They don't even use the tractor now. That's the bad thing.
No, I know they're going into it.
All of that are going down and.
And they don't like.
There's all this thick brush that that arm would clear that we can't clear with a tractor. So, that was really the, the selling, you know, that, you know.
If they can't really use it, I mean, make clean beaches and stuff too.
Yeah, I think the benefit of it was that you can do more with it without having to stop and go get a different machine and come back, and this one can do, can go all the way through the trails, whereas the, the backhoe cannot.
No, this one can't go through the trails.
From?
That trail was six foot. That excavator's wider than that. You couldn't get it on the trail.
The Mini-X's?
That one.
It's about, boy, it's six, seven foot or something.
Plus, when you try to turn it, it'd be windy. Them trails are gonna be limited to anything for on the main street.
Yeah.
But dog, you can't take that many down. Plus, it weighs ten thousand pounds. I don't buy ten bridges of home or whatever.
No, I doubt it. I'm gonna leave it up to y'all.
I think we need to find out about CDLs and everything before we buy something. Then we can't move around without hiring somebody.
You mean the C D L drop, pull the trailer?
Well, then have the G B W get that truck, and then the G B W, the trailer's gotta be a trailer.
Didn't he say that if we paid for it, he'd give the C D L?
Yeah, they can get it. We can get it.
You don't just run and get them.
No, you don't. I mean, you have to, you have to go through the process.
I think he had already started some of that. I think part of it too, with what, from talking to Miranda, is keeping the equipment turned. Just with the, the SPOS funds coming up, we have to show that whether it's this or whether it's something else. When this stuff comes up, we have to show we're actually spending these funds, that we're not just sitting, and that the equipment's getting turned, whether, even the truck, like, we have to show we're spending it so that we can just, by asking for it. When it comes up, so we don't have this money just sitting.
Well, if the price on the equipment in the bid is limited, we can go ahead and get it set up, like I said. Then we can move on if we have to without the prices of all going up, but like I said, if he can't get a C D L.
Tagging David.
I got mine. I'm glad I got it, because I would've got given the board.
Yeah.
You have to, I have this one now for three weeks already. It's not real simple anymore. When I got mine, you see.
Yeah. Is it on my class, as you know? Or you just go through the?
It's very expensive too. They say, I, most papers quit and trying to get them, you know, unless you go to the school.
What do we need to find out? Do we need a C D L for it?
The G B W on the truck and trailer, you can't go over twenty-six thousand. And someday, I'll take, people stop, you can't go over six thousand with the trailers, so.
So, twenty-three thousand?
Your license, you give for twenty-six thousand, regular license. That's a combination.
Twenty-six thousand and one? Okay. Mark up all that.
So, G B W's on the truck and the trailer.
I know, we pled guilty, and then found out later that he shouldn't have pled guilty, so, yeah. So, did you even get it?
So, we can get set up to do the deal on the equipment, and then just not use it again, if nothing works out.
That's kinda what I'm thinking, just so we have it in place and we don't have to hold it in a meeting.
Yeah, it may be six months before you get one, too, if she doesn't notify you.
Well, within six months, the price will be gone of another.
I think your trade-in value is gonna come down, isn't that concerned?
Yeah.
Because I know that the backhoes are back ordered, and it could be one they're offering so much more for the trade-in.
Well, this is not how the emissions, like what this new stuff is.
Yeah, a lot of people are trying to get away from the newer stuff.
Yeah. So, that motion would be to, to trade in the existing equipment and purchase the Mini-X?
I would do the one that has the attachment. So, one of this for the sixty-six.
Sixty-six more, right?
Yeah, it has an excavator mower. Sixty-six thousand four hundred.
With, so closed cab with excavator, excavator?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to trade in our existing equipment for a Mini-X with a closed cab with an excavator for sixty-six, four thousand minus the, minus the trade-in value? Uh, what was it?
Thirty-nine, five, and six thousand two hundred and fifty, which is roughly forty-five, seven fifty.
Forty-five, seven fifty. Forty-five, seven fifty.
Wow, my...
James, first, can I get a second?
Trying to figure out the way I need to word this.
Where this lock can be the end, anyway.
We're locking it in.
That's all right, I would second it. With a little bit more discussion, I guess you would say that we're, we're setting it up in case everything works out with getting the proper...
Well, you can second it, then y'all can still discuss.
Second it, yeah, most, for the purpose of discussion, yeah.
Yeah, then I'll put down...
Now you can talk about what you want to do.
And then I'll put down that we need to check, so, CDL, all in favor?
All in favor?
Is there a condition on it?
We're putting to check CDL, is the condition.
Is that, is that agreeable to you make the motion and to you make the second, okay?
Okay. And now all in favor?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, unanimous, okay.
Can't see when we set up the school for CDLs. Especially if there's any cost to, need a payback clause for an old pay thing. Trade somebody, get CDLs and everything, just quit it, actually.
Nine percent, that's what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, this guy was our nature trail.
It's not, because I wouldn't hurt to have somebody with them just in case.
Let's look at the nature trail, Kelsey, I knew that we... So has anybody had an opportunity to go out and look at the nature trail?
I haven't made it out there yet. I'm going to try out there tomorrow.
William, you did?
Yeah, I did.
You did?
It was nearly an hour ago.
Um, well, good. Dan, give me your thoughts on it.
I think you can take a little cleaning up, there's a few spots we may need to walk and do a little punch list for both. As far as, I don't know which of the crossings may have been ones that the city had put in earlier, which ones he did. A lot of, there was like dirt piled up in the end of the pipes, so there's just some cleanup work.
Yeah, I noticed that, I took some pictures of that.
We talked about the depth of the material, I think, Kelsey, got me straight on that, it was four inch, compacted down to two.
Yeah.
I did a couple of test holes, about eight in the first hundred yards, and the average did work from two to three inches, so I said the material's right.
Yeah.
As far as compacting, you know, you can tell the difference in the areas that are damp. It's the areas that are dry, so a little wet, a little wet, you know, if it gets a bit, I mean, we have a...
It is a self-compacting material, so I know, like, whenever, we talked to Michael Pitt about it originally, he said you didn't actually have to have someone compact it, because it would self-compact, but it wasn't with it. And so I asked about that originally, he said that they did compact it as they went, but there were some areas when it got really close to the border that it could be a little bit soft, and just because they don't want to actually hit the border when they were doing it.
Some of that, some of those, um, pipes that are in there are clogged, so they need to, I don't think, any...
Yeah, I didn't know which ones to get out, which ones we had, but...
Yeah, he added, I think, because it wasn't in the, it was not in the bid packet thing, because he put a thing in there, he was adding three or four pipes for drainage issues that he identified that wasn't notated in the bid, but he wanted to make sure it was taken care of, because there were going to be drainage issues if it wasn't done.
Yeah, we'll get him a copy of the rest of those, but I think some of them could have been older, no?
Yeah.
Pressure him to clean out ones that we should clean out.
Yeah, I know the maintenance guys put one or two in a while back in areas that we had problems with. I'll have to ask, I don't know which ones were which, I know one of them for sure that they, the guys put in. But, um, I don't, I don't actually know. Anyway, I asked him to send this other estimate, because there was a misunderstanding, there was the area that that forked off to go to the pavilion in the middle, that he did not include in the estimate. I think he just honestly wasn't paying attention to it. So he honestly was going to just eat this. So I did ask him to, to send an estimate in, because his estimate for the whole job was so much lower than everyone else's. His came in at forty-two five, the next estimate was fifty-four five. And honestly, I just don't, I don't want him to not bid on jobs coming up. So, for the record, he was going to just do what needed, but I asked him to send it in, because he wasn't even going to bid on this job, it was me harassing him and asking him to bid as well as Justin Brown, just because they are both local and are known to do a job.
So was this here bid on in the original bid, or...
This is an additional to add the area that goes to the pavilion, but it was actually, he's actually going to go from the pavilion, I think, all the way down to the next portion of the trail. So it would connect, like, the loop from both sides to the pavilion in the middle. There's one, like, in the middle of the trail, one side, a hammer too.
Hammer feet is a piece of cabinet.
I did not check it.
We're going to know how many feet, how many feet the original trail is and see sort of what the footage comes out to do.
Because we didn't even add it in the original, because we were cutting off that back end of it. And we went, William and I were looking for the...
I mean, is this fifty feet or five hundred feet?
That's more than fifty feet. Because it, to the pavilion might have been fifty feet, but there's a whole other chunk that they went ahead and cleared to go ahead and take it to the other end.
It's about from here, past that door.
To the original pavilion, and then he cleared from there all the way down to connect it to the other portion of the trail. Which is a good bit more than enough.
How far do you think it is? I know you saw it.
It sounds fast for the pavilion, so. And then he's talking about padding in a regular pavilion.
Around the pavilion.
And that was to, the way this one is, extra slate driven border to extend between trails and the pavilion. I know the border they put in down there to do all of it, eight thousand for that stuff, for all of it, not for one small area.
You come off the main trail, it hooks down, you got the pavilion, you want to go around it, then the pavilion that comes back in down here and into the main trail, the place, you could walk and make a circle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's probably...
Yeah, something like that, maybe.
I thought I walked that, around the one time, maybe. You cut off the hill down there, and then you get the little pavilion, and then you cut down around back over into the main trail.
I haven't, I'd like to see how many feet it is, but when you do the calculations, probably done heights, you'll see it, it's incredible. You know how many feet the original way it was?
I don't think it was done by feet, because there wasn't even, I know it was originally over two thousand feet for the entire thing. But we also had them cut off that back end of the trail where it got that little pigtail in, where it got real thin, or that word bridge that was always slippery. So they had to cut back in and regrade that area coming back up to, to change out and add that additional area of the trail, so that they don't use that other, the back end of it. So it wasn't, there wasn't a breakdown, like, material cost breakdown of anything. So you have, like, where they were going in, removing old mulch, regrading areas, adding pipe. There wasn't, you know what I'm saying, there's not a material cost.
I mean, if we knew how many linear foot they are, we can calculate and see how much it is of foot, and see if it's...
I just, I don't know.
We need to know everything before we just bid on something. Did you have any idea how many feet it, it should have been in the bid packet, in the bridge.
There wasn't, that's why whenever we did the bid package, I brought it in, because I'm not a bid package writer.
When we first did it, I forgot.
I would like to say it was...
It was a half mile.
That was for all the trails.
Yeah, for all the trails. No, the, the, he said that the, the walking trail was a half mile. And, did he know?
I don't remember.
Yeah, it's a half mile, it comes down, and there's a loop in the center and it comes out. So it's basically missing one side of the loop, is what it is.
That back side is a, it goes five thousand two hundred eighty feet, so you're looking at twenty-six hundred, but then we took out that whole back end of it, which was a chunk of it, I don't know how many feet were taken out.
Yeah, we took out that whole leg to come across the, he's been there enough to bridge.
Michael Pitt didn't have that in there.
They have it coming up these.
Yeah, yeah, Michael didn't have that in there, he just had the one coming straight in, the circle in the middle, and then it coming out.
Yeah.
So, and he said that was a half mile. Yes, sir?
Uh, comments to the trail?
Yes.
An issue that we need to address, I think, is, my walk on it looks really pretty nice, it's got nice edges and stuff. And I like the piping that they put underneath. What I'm concerned about is the entrances to those pipes are going to get overgrown, and it's going to plug up the pipes at some point, as we've already done with our other pipes. So we need to kind of add that to the job description of your maintenance department to, I mean, I there's different ways of controlling that entrance, you could put some mat down and put some stones on top of that, or you could spray it, I mean, and a lot of different ways of doing it, but I think when we get the first big ring, we'll find out how well the drainage system works and what are the problems with it, because of... You see, some of them, and I don't know where they're picking up the water from, but anyway, that's an issue to kind of think about in the maintenance of those, of those drainage pipes. I went around and picked up three different piles of the little white strapping that went along, I think, with the pipe, with the edging. And I picked up one big pipe and one long piece of edging and stacked it all out at the entrance. And I see it's all gone now, so I don't know if they threw away the trash. The other thing that I saw, originally I built some little markers about the trail. I also built some benches, and next to the benches, wherever there was a bench, I tried to have a trash receptacle. And they were originally ones that the city had, I repainted them, the painting's all coming off and stuff. You go like to Canton, where they have a trail with trash receptacles. They had like a little thirty-six by thirty-six concrete stand to set the trash receptacles on. That's another assignment that we should give, and I notice also that, just as you were all saying, they didn't do the trail, the, the the path with the filler to the picnic table and then the roof. And so I think you're all saying you're going to go do that now, like, yes, that's what this is. Which, which I was going to ask, why didn't you not do that? I don't know. But the other thing we need to do is probably take down that bridge that used to be the other entrance that you're not using. That's, my wife fell on that, first got here, it's not a good thing, it's slippery. I put the little pieces of sticks on each of the steps to try to make it a little more safe. But right at the top of the entrance is another little nature trail sign, which I paid for and I installed. And we're not wanting people to go down that stair anymore, so we need to, again, have the maintenance department pick up that little sign that I had a custom made nature trail on and relocated probably to that new spur that they put on the north end. There's another one there at the north end, and it rode goes splits, but we don't want to encourage people to go down to the stairway or particularly get it torn out. So, that was all the things that I contrasted and added. Yeah, and then you need to put another trash receptacle back at the picnic table and stuff, there used to be one there, it's gone. So they need to make another one of those little concrete pads to put your trash receptacle on there as well.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll, we'll, more than likely, we'll put, we'll use, we'll get some, you know, receptacles around there. That's a little bit maybe more conducive to, than the barrels that we had that we painted.
Yeah. Those barrel out there, you should just sort of weigh it.
Yeah.
I thought we were removing that bridge. Was that not even the...
It wasn't part of the package, it was for them to redirect the stuff, and, you know.
We didn't do that, but we can have, we can have to pass it, maybe that's, uh... And then we do know we need to clean out and rip wrap. Like you said, the, there, we've got several of those where we install pipes at, and those pipes, it just kind of stayed damp on the top of it. We'll see when you go down there, with the first, first two hundred yards in, you'll see some of it is damp on the top. And you can see where, um, when we had that really bad rain here a couple of weeks ago, it just washed sand all the way through it, so it's not even out. So.
I'm going to try to go check it out tomorrow.
What do you think? I will make sure, there's some things we can add to the punch list.
They did a nice job with, they ended up formed around with a nice turn.
I thought the overall project was really nice, I mean, it was good, I've had a lot, I've had a lot of people comment on it, so. Okay, Kelsey, um, so, so you guys want additional information? What do you want, David? What kind of information do you want?
Well, we done some capitalizing, just saying, it's twenty-six hundred, so that's seventeen dollars of food.
Yeah, so that's a good question, fifty-two hundred would be enough to do three hundred linear feet, it's not that far. That's just rough estimate, if he can give us the linear footage of what he did, but we need to allow him some too for the extra work. I think he won't have to do that extra work on this footage.
Right, he, I think I've been on miles from it, or anything, I guess, I've...
Good, but you know, after grade it probably a little bit, because it's rough like the other ones.
Yeah, I know, and he's need graded down. It's still popping. Especially that, the area, that other area that goes back to the, the other part. And I know he'd originally worked a deal for the, the statescape. And I don't know if that's still in effect.
Material.
Yeah, because I know that was part of the reason he got, like, his quote originally came in as low as it did if he worked a deal with them for purchasing X amount.
Yeah, you get the...
It's been bought over time, but...